I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings for the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2021, and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand for political leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the edge of the globe in the middle of the thirty years of struggle.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Visserna?
Here.
Mr. Vannastrella?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Scudary?
Yes.
Mr. Hovellario?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the October 14th minutes? Motion made by Mr. Scudary, seconded by Mr. Vannastrella. All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy, any communications?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to go into our resolution, Application 389. The Kenilworth Board of Education, Mr. Rego?
Yes, the Board of Ed came before us on October 14th. They were requesting a courtesy review as to their proposal to replace a portion of the classrooms that were, I guess, significantly damaged with modular construction. We've heard testimony from the applicant, we've heard testimony from Mr. Gennella, the business administrator, as to what they were going to do, where it was going to occur. Three modular special education classrooms. The Board heard it, and the Board basically gave the Board of Ed its consent to proceed.
Okay. So with that being said, can we have a motion to approve the resolution number 389?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Vannastrella, seconded by Mr. Clemente. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vannastrella?
Yes.
Mr. Visserna?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Scudary?
Yes.
Mr. Hovellario?
Yes.
Okay. Application number 388, Magni Holdings, Mr. Rego?
Yes. This was again in front of us on October 14th. We approved preliminary site plan approval with dimensional variances, and we'll be hearing later on the agenda final site plan approval. This was an application that the Board approved for a, basically a 26,000 square foot building, little in excess on 651 North Michigan Avenue, for the applicant to establish a headquarters in Kenilworth for storage of forklifts. The chairman would hold that up. That's onsite storage of forklifts. There were a number of site plan improvements also proposed. The Board had not concerns, but they wanted to see certain revisions to the plans in terms of the building, the facade, and that's later when we hear it that, I believe, will be the focus of what we're going to hear. So this would be for preliminary with the variances requested.
Okay. Can we have a motion for the preliminary resolution of Application 388?
Correct. Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Vannastrella, seconded by Mr. Ladati. Roll call, please.
Mr. Visserna?
Yes.
Mr. Vannastrella?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
Yes.
And Mr. Scudary?
Yes.
Okay, that's the resolutions. Moving on to old business, any old business, Kathy, that you see? Okay, so new business. I have one item for new business. Our regular meeting in December was scheduled for Thursday, the 9th. In our workshop, we talked about moving it because of some vacations and different things. However, our new meeting date will be Tuesday, the 14th. So please, anyone who wants to attend that meeting, our December meeting will be Tuesday, the 14th, and I thank everyone.
6:30, 7:00.
Same thing. It will be noticed just like everything else, okay? So we have to move that to the 14th. Okay, next item. Application 821, Block 135, Lot 21, 654 Quinton Avenue. That would be Compton and Harriet.
Bruton.
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 Please step up.
We have can and not to some publication.
Thank you. Okay. Before we get started, Mr. Rego, would you like to swear in our professionals? Yes. Gentlemen, if you could please stand up. With regard to these applications on this evening, do you swear the testimony and comments you may make shall be the truth.
Right. Yes.
Thank you. That was our Board Planner and our Board Engineer. Okay, for the record, our Board Planner is out our nor-, not our normal, our regular Board Planner is out. And Mr. Ed Colick is here to, on behalf of our planning items. So let's get rolling.
Okay. My name is Michael Bonner from the law firm of Cabot Bond and Orgas. What do you need to spell? What do you need to say? What we have here is a fairly simple application. Our clients, the applicant purchased the house last fall. They submitted plans and got permitted for certain renovations at the house, one of which was the front of our deck was conforming. As they went through the winter, they realized that a roof on the deck, it got kind of slippery, it rained and snow and things like that. So their son was also a contractor, put a roof over it without getting permit, thinking that would be okay. But the zoning inspector showed up, realized that there was some line, he informed them that a variance was necessary for the roof. Our client, the applicant came to us, we put in the application, we're here to correct the mistaken approval, get approval for the variance as required for the roof over the deck. We have the architect who will briefly explain the plans, and we have the planner here to talk about the variances. And we also have the applicants, their son, in case they have any actual questions about what happened.
Mr. Bonner, could I ask? The roof is already up.
Correct.
Are you requesting that the Board consider and approve that roof, or you're going to be amending it further?
They were not planning to amend it further.
Okay.
If anyone else in the site inspection, please show us the photographs. It's a pretty narrow deck.
All right.
Really doesn't lend itself to being cut back very much.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're dealing with, all right?
Yep, that's it.
If you could call your first witness?
First witness, Andrew. Speak your name.
If you could raise your right hand, please, sir. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
My name is Andrew Potberez, P-O-T-B-E-R-E-Z-M-I-K-E.
Okay. So Andrew.
It's four Andrew, yeah.
I think it's on the plan, so we'll go with it. Okay? So with all respect, is it okay to call you Andrew?
Everybody does.
If you could qualify him, please. I've been having trouble speaking to Mr. David. Okay, Andrew, please go.
So I'm a licensed architect, state of New Jersey. I have practiced for last twenty-some years, graduated in 1985, 1989, got my license, and 20 years ago, I'm on my own practice.
And everything is active?
And I did testify in the past.
Before here?
My license is current.
Sounds good to us.
So this is a little issue, this is a little outline. In mid-2020, the owner approached us, if we could design a little front deck, so it's easier to get into the house. We did this, we draw a little deck at the deck size, I mean, I do have the drawings actually here, it was just deck and it's all.
Excuse me, Andrew, would this be an exhibit, or is that part of this plan?
The blow-up of the plans, also the plan that you have.
We have, okay, fine.
And then basically, that front deck was, it was 15 by 16 feet, it was front porch, front deck. And then my owner, the owner of the house, my client, saw the deck, and that was done in 2020. Then over the winter, this parent was living in that house.
Okay.
And over the winter, it was a little bit of issue, because what happens is when it's open deck, it's full of snow, and it gets very, very slippery. So this parent basically asked him, what can we do with this, because it's kind of dangerous for us to get in and get in and out of the house. So he says, oh, wait a minute, I have an open parent, let me just put a roof over this, so you're protected as you're opening the door, as you're bringing the groceries. And that's basically what he did. And then he, so he basically built the deck, extended the post, and basically put a roof over that exact deck that he had the permits for, assuming down the line, he was basically going to incorporate into that permit that he has open, you know, for the deck.
So there was an existing permit on the deck?
There was an existing permit on the deck.
But he went ahead and put a roof on it and didn't have a variance?
He wished it had a roof, but he, again, looking across the street, looking down the street, looking, couple streets over, there was a lot of houses that don't have roofs over the front entrance, you know, that would be an issue.
So you did say the son, are you the son?
No.
Someone's here? You did say he's a contractor?
He's a contractor, and this is his parents' house. This is not for sale.
I just want to get my ducks in a row.
Yes, yes, okay. And he put the roof up, and then until the township construction official came in, and basically, so he was, wait a minute, you know, you're out of, so that's how this started.
Okay.
Okay, so now, what we asking, basically, we asking for the variance, we asking for front yard setback variance, because the existing, the existing, the requirement is 25 feet, okay? The second floor is, can be 23 feet, the existing is 26.8, but with the roof, we have a 20.8 setback.
20.8?
20.8, okay?
And the requirement is 25?
If the requirement is 25, for second floor, it requires 25, so because the second floor can't approach it, okay? So that's the variance we basically see. And this is all started because, you know, over the winter, again, it was issue with the ice, no one that day, it was issue with very, being very slippery because of the gateway.
That's all we have for the architect, if there are any questions.
Would the Board like to question the architect now, or would you like to hear all the testimony and ask him at one time? Okay, let's move on to your next witness then, and we could.
We're not planning to.
Sorry? Oh, no, I thought you had someone else that was going to speak.
We do, we're going to open up the public after.
Yeah, let's do that all at once, so.
Do you want to do it that way?
Yeah, we're gonna, let's hear all your testimony and then.
As I said, the applicants are here, and their son, but we weren't planning on putting any direct testimony on, because.
Whoever do you feel that is necessary to speak on behalf of this applicant?
We have a planner, and you can do it. Good evening.
Good evening. If you could raise your right hand, please. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
It's Andrew, last name is Janu, J-A-N-I-W.
So we have two Andrus?
Yes.
Okay, what's your last name?
Janu, J-A-N-I-W.
J-A-N-I-W, Janu?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Andrew.
Okay, Mr. Janu.
So our principal is Department of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services. We're located in Colson Lake, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, still as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, currently serving as the planner for the Borough of Carrick, Middlesex, Camden, County, for Living City.
I think we got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My license is in good standing.
Okay.
So as was mentioned, this is a fairly simple aspect in terms of planning testimony. What we're seeking is a C variance for the encroachment of the roof into the front yard setback. There is an existing condition with the side yard setback of 4.7 feet, where five is required, that's an existing condition, it hasn't been aggravated by this application, that some has been with the property forever, and quite frankly, if it were needed to be qualified tonight, that would be a hardship, because it's a pre-existing condition. But with respect to the encroachment into the front yard, we would qualify that under what's known as the C2 or balance test, where we have to meet the five prongs of the balance test criteria, the three positive, the two negative points of criteria. And the first being that it relates to a specific piece of property, and it's a unique situation. We had a front porch addition that was done with permits. There was some concerns about the safety of the parents leaving that, the roof was put on without a permit, that was done in error. The encroachment is approximately 1.2 feet into the front yard setback, it's fairly de minimis, and quite frankly, it is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. We kept surveying the homes, there are other porches with roofs that are very consistent with this. So it is a unique set of conditions and a situation within the neighborhood. The second prong is that it somehow advances the purposes of the municipal land use, so that we know no variance is just good as a property. In this case, I believe there are two. One is to provide a desirable visual environment, because it is something that will be attractive to the house, it adds a nice covered area for the residents, and it is consistent with the neighborhood. The second is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development in the lands of New Jersey to promote the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of the public. In this case, the roof was constructed as a safety feature. The home doesn't have a vestibule, doesn't have a locker room up front, it's basically you walk from the family room right out onto the porch, there was concern about snow accumulation, big slippery. The roof was put out of good intent in terms of safety because of the age of the residents, so we do think it advances the general safety of the public and whoever in the future live in this property. The third is that it is essentially a better zoning alternative, or that it does not, unbalance that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And in this case, we do believe the benefits outweigh the detriments. The encroachment is de minimis, it's 1.2 feet, or about 5% of what the overall front yard setback should be. It really won't be noticeable in terms of anything that will protrude into the yard, and it does create that aspect of safety for anyone exiting. With respect to the negative criteria, we have to show that it doesn't do anything detrimental to your zone plan or to your master plan. In this case, in looking at your master plan, two points stuck out. One is that you're looking to keep neighborhood consistency. You're looking for the character of the neighborhood to be carried forward, you don't want something that's very different than what's in the neighborhood. In this case, there's a porch that's being added with the roof, it's very much consistent with the neighborhood homes, the neighborhood is all basically the same genre of homes, there have been these types of porches that were additions placed on, it's not something that will be detrimental, and again, it's a fairly de minimis encroachment. And finally, to encourage the preservation and maintenance of all residential properties. These are fairly new homeowners, with respect to this property, they're looking to do improvements, that's what prompted the porch addition, and then they added aspect of the safety of the roof, I think that certainly promotes the benefits to them. With respect to the other point of the negative criteria, there has to be approved that there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood by doing this. And quite frankly, I do don't see anything. When we look at substantial detriment, we look at something in a residential neighborhood that will create excessive noise, drainage issues, trash, traffic, none of that's happening here. It's something that really won't be visible and noticeable. So when you look at the balance test, I think it's a good application, I think it would be very good to look up a C2 variance where this Board is considered a relief for.
Anything else?
We have no other witnesses to that.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Does the Board want to ask any questions at this point?
Yeah, I just want to ask, does anyone have any pictures?
Yeah.
Is there pictures of what the house looks like now, what the homes that are adjacent to it look like? You're making some claims about how.
So if we're going to see these pictures, these are exhibits, then? Yeah. We got more.
Can you make them exhibits? I only have one set of copies. Yeah, but we can send over extras, if you want, you can pass them around. Start over here.
Why don't you start out with Mr. David? Could you indicate who took the pictures and when, and I'm assuming there was a picture?
These pictures were taken by an associate of Mr. Janu. And these were just taken from Google Streetwise. I did this, it's my fault.
And the other ones are taken when, roughly?
Yes, today.
Oh, yesterday, okay. Well, we mark it A1, 3.
There are two pictures of the deck, one from the front, one from the side. Let's call the front one A1.
Well, we can mark it as a group.
Okay.
A1, A1 and 3.
Group of pictures, there you go. And if you need extra copies, send an email to me, I can send you a PDF, and you can make answers.
We'll circle in.
Questions? Was the original front porch permitted?
Yeah.
What was the question? If the front porch had a permit.
Right. Of all the renovations, until they put the roof on, it was permitted, as.
So there's no issue with the front porch?
No.
Internal?
Settle the overhang.
As soon as Kevin O'Brien reported, and the floor, they pulled the roof up. Yeah. And it was all permanent.
I'll wait till the other Board members see that, but do you want to have any more discussion? Does the Board want to have any more discussion with the professionals now, where would you like me to open this up to the public about this, and then come back and discuss this? Yesterday?
Yeah, I have a question. The testimony was that the front yard setback, the required front yard setback is 25 feet, and what's being proposed, yeah, 26.8. In Kevin O'Brien's report, he indicated that the front yard setback is 22 feet required, and that you were proposing 26.8. And then somewhere else, I saw 20, something different. What is the setback?
I agree with the architect.
Yeah, just what is?
The setback is 25. The house sits at 26.8.
Okay.
The measure will to the front porch or deck, or whatever you want to call it, is.
20.8?
Again, existing house is 26.8, the front porch is 5 feet. So it's 21.8 is the basically front porch, which is complying, everything's fine, and that's what the roof is. But the second floor, we can, we can go about 23 feet, right?
Did you get that? I understand perfectly what he's saying.
We're good.
We're good. So, you know, I just don't want to go too out of order here. Usually, I think we.
Go to our professionals.
Professionals at this point. Mr. Colick, do you have some comments to make with this application?
I did do a site visit today, and I noted that many of the homes on the block are very similar in character, very similar size of blocks, and a lot of them do have, as is demonstrated by this picture, the smaller porches that overhang, the roofs that overhang, hang the porches.
I, I mean, I would note that I only took pictures of ones that were supported by columns, because that's what seemed to trigger the variance. There are a number of other houses that have overhangs that are on the side, that are on the side.
So I would, you know, I would concur with what the testimony was in that regard, in terms of the character of the neighborhood. In terms of the porch being permitted without the roof, there is an exception in the ordinance that Kevin had referenced in his report, which does allow exceptions into the front yard setback, which is the porch. So what has triggered it simply is the porch. So I would agree. And I think what the planner was trying to.
I have this step back, you would agree with what?
I would agree that that's what triggers the variance.
The roof.
And the roof, the roof itself only. And I think what the planner was trying to express in terms of the differences between the upper, the second floor and the lower floor, is that to the building itself, on the first floor, you do need 25 feet. The roof, if you have a second floor, which this building does have, that could overhang 2 feet. I think that you could look at this deck as being more or less an extension of what the second floor area would be, so you'd probably get that extra 2 feet, you'd get to 23. So the level of deviation is rather small.
So in footage, what is it?
Well, it's 23 feet, and I think they're at 20.8, is that correct?
20.8.
20.8, so it's, yes, 1.2. 2. Or is it 2.2?
2.2.
2.2, okay, I just wanted to get that on record, because. That's an efficiency. Exactly what it is. That's an efficiency.
So, all right. So that's 20.8 inches, that's a minus.
Right, that's the D8.
For the roof. So that's where we're at. Anything else would you like to add, Mr. Colick?
No, I think I would concur that based on where this, the porch is situated, or the center of the site, it's not going to have as significant impact on any joint properties, because you have a driveway going by on one side, and the other side, you have the rest of the house, and then the one setback. So I don't see a significant detriment here.
Mr. Colonel?
No, I have no comments. The, already, my own comment, my letter was about getting permits, and they already did, and based on the pictures, it looks like they created the property correctly.
Okay. All right. If that's all you have to add, I think what I'm going to do is ask to open this to the public, and then the Board could speak to what we think, or would you like to?
I think Board members should have an opportunity to.
Oh, I thought you wanted them to, all right, we could have an opportunity to ask these questions. I would rather do it that way, but I thought we were leaning towards the.
No, I mean, to me, the last thing, you know, is to open it to the public once the Board has done it there.
Okay. So, anyone from the Board here want to ask a question to any one of the people at this spoke, or anyone else? Crystal Ladati?
Well, I just have a, it's not so much of a question, I mean, several occasions over the last year or two years, we've had contractors come in here and not just totally, I don't say disregard, but maybe not check what the codes are to build something, professional contractor, not checking the codes. It's an issue, right? That's a concern that I have, and I've always had that for several years I've been on this Board and other Boards.
So the question is raised, the homeowner's son is the contractor, is the homeowner's son a licensed contractor? And I know he wasn't squirting in or anything. I'd like to ask that question. Could you state your name and address, record?
My address, Nicholas Bruton, 198 Elizabeth Avenue, Cranford, New Jersey.
Could you spell your last name, please?
B-R-U-T-O-N.
And your first name is Nicholas?
Yes, N-C-H-O-L-A-S.
Okay, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Nicholas, I have a couple of questions for you, okay?
Of course.
You're a licensed contractor?
Yes, new home builder and licensed contractor.
Can I ask you, how long you been a contractor?
22 years.
So you know what my next question is, right?
Sure.
You kind of know better, right? I mean, what we have here is a permit, and, you know, you're before us, and, you know, I'm a contractor, and so sometimes people do things and ask for forgiveness later, and here we are. So we have a great testimony here between the architect and the planner, and it was impeccable. But had you come before you built the roof, this would probably be an on issue. But right now, we have to discuss this, because what's going to happen here, this could trigger a snowball effect, and that's what our concern is. And that's why the Board always has to ask the question, you know, is this somebody just going ahead and doing? We know all the reasons why, and they're all valid, but now we, you know, I had to ask those questions, because is someone else going to come up here and tell me, well, I come up here and tell me, well, I put a roof, you know, it was really important for me to make a path, you know, to my neighbor's yard and have a swinging fence? I have, I have to worry about that. So that, I mean, that's the only questions I have for you. But does anybody else have any questions?
No, actually, that was going to be my comment as well. And again, I think as a contractor, you know, what are some of the towns that you normally build in?
Let me know when I, go ahead.
Yeah. What towns have you built in around Galway?
Let me just address the chairman.
The chairman, sure.
His first comment. I have been building new homes and renovating major construction for well over 15 years. I've been in business for 22 years. You know, when I put that roof on that house, obviously it's my parents' house and that's my first concern. I could have never imagined, even with my experience, that since the deck itself was permitted, that the roof wouldn't be permitted. It was never my intent not to apply for a permit. When Jerry Edgar came out for the inspection, actually, I called for an inspection because I am familiar with the processes. I've many times have done things. I call the architect, I update, I submit, and I go through the channels. Jerry rightfully said, hey, Nick, because he knows me, I've been around a long time. You know, I see you left it open for me to inspect, but I know this town, this is the zoning thing, you gotta, you gotta put the brakes on it. And then obviously I started the process. Now, to answer you, every day I go to work, we don't do a lot of work here, we don't do a lot of work in Cranford where I live, I don't do a lot of work in Russville. Every day I go to work in Short Hills and Livingston, those are my bread and butter towns. I've been working there for over 15 years. Jerry is obviously the subcode official in Short Hills, Milburn. Obviously, he's not here. Not, I don't know what weight that would carry, but, you know, it was an honest mistake and my parents wanted it and I wanted to do it. I live three minutes from them. You know, I moved, this is a big thing for me, I moved him to this town to be close to me, my kids. It was definitely not out of, I actually also hold a building inspector license on two levels. I have an ICS and an RCS. So I'm more than familiar with the rules.
Well, so, Nick, if I may, I feel your hardship, you know, with your parents and the build. But just listening to you and your character, I don't believe that there was anything disingenuous that you did. So I'm not here like a trial attorney here, but certainly not, nowhere near that. But you also have put us in a precarious position. So that's why I'm asking the question. So that's just my questions. And there's other board members that may have questions for Nick, the planner, the engineer. Seeing none, okay. I think it's, Nick, do you have anything for us, did you like to add?
Most.
Okay. We're not trying to make it difficult here, we just have to ask these questions.
I understand.
Okay? Okay. So at this point, we would like to have a motion to open this to the public.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this application and this application only? Okay, seeing none.
Motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Can we have some conversation about this, please? What's our thoughts here?
Well, I can start, I can, you know, I think if the application came to us beforehand, it's a pretty simple application, like you said beforehand, I think we would have a problem with it, that's the way I look at it. And it happened. I don't, I don't see that there's enough of a, of a problem with the end result here. From what I can tell, it's not even complete, that to warrant them, you know, taking it down. We've had, like Mr. Ladati said, we've had quite a few over the last couple of years, applications come in this type of situation over the last year or so, that have been a lot more egregious than this and I think we've denied some too. But in my opinion, I'd agree with our planner and the, and the applicant's planner, that basic criteria and, you know, it would be, it would make it easier, you know, I don't know if there was something that was out there that was, okay, you made a mistake, there should be some type of, is there a fine, you know, anything like that? I know we don't have that, but maybe thinking in the future, I don't know how that can be dealt with. But anyway, so as far as this application is concerned, I'm okay with it, notwithstanding the fact that they went, they jumped it down here on the permit.
Okay, Mr. McMahon?
Builders on the board, is that a reasonable error to make in your opinion?
Well, sometimes.
The first permit would have included the roof?
That's, that's why I asked if the, if the porch was permitted, you know, and a lot of time.
Assume that the roof.
Yeah, even in our master plan discussions, we've had some discussions as far as how far a roof should be allowed to come into the front, into the front setbacks and roofs, front porch roofs are, there is some tolerance for the front porch to come into the front setback. So I know that gets a little.
It's reasonable to assume that he would have thought that was covered.
It's reasonable. I mean.
That's all I wanted.
Have I made that error in the past? Probably. Saying, well, we got the deck, you know, what would it take to throw up a couple posts, put the, you know, the girders in and do we got to do so? That's why, given the fact of, you know, it's his mother's house and if he wanted to do something terrible, he probably could have brought that roof out another five feet and said, we're going to make a real big deck, you know, but he didn't do that. So, I don't know. Anybody else want to come up? Mr. Skedary also in the construction.
I think it comes down to how he feel, if he truly was doing it to get away with something or made an honest mistake. He did leave it open for the inspector. He could have had the porch done if he thought he was doing something wrong and put the roof up later. He's a contractor, he can come back anytime.
Right.
So, you know, I think that goes a little bit to his credibility of what he's saying, that he thought he wouldn't be able to do it and then get the permit for it later. And I know that goes on a lot in your building, so.
Anyone else? Can I? Mr. Rego?
Yeah, just let me, working for several boards, every board I've ever worked for has these issues. You know, it's called post-construction approval. You know, you do it and then you, then you ask for forgiveness. And the way I, I suggest boards approach it is, as if it wasn't done yet, you hear the case and if you otherwise could say, this is fine, you know, we're going to grant the variances, it's a good project, in this case for safety, for aesthetics, and put aside any punitive aspect that someone jumped a gun on. If the reasons why they did it are valid and they make sense and you assume it's not there yet, then I think the board can go ahead and approve it. We've denied, recently, we denied, I think, a deck application that was already built. In that one, I think that was significantly different than this because the reasons they gave, if they hadn't built it, the reasons they gave, in my legal view, would not have supported extending that deck to the back. It was, it was not a good reason. And in that case, it's easier to say, look, we wouldn't have approved this anyway, so we're going to say no to you, even though you've built it. Here, I, here I think it's, it's different. If you can assume that the roof isn't there and what you've heard makes sense, then yes, I mean, the applicant has explained why he built it, what he felt. To my way of thinking, it sounded like, he's an experienced guy, it sounded like a very reasonable state. And I can tell you, looking at the memos and hearing the testimony, I had some confusion as to what the setback was. You know, we, first floor, second floor. So that's, if you could assume it's a good application regardless, they've heard it, they did it without approval, but here we are, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Venestrel? Nothing? I'll get to you, Mr. Hovlerio.
I agree with Mr. Rego that they didn't do with any malicious intent, it was just that, you know, it's snow nice and weather and, you know, I guess they knew they had to give permit, even though they haven't, that, I'm sure they were applying for it.
What happens, okay, just thinking out loud. So you're saying that, okay, you know, if your position on board is this after-construction review and we would have okayed it anyway. So what's preventing everybody from saying, I only need 2 feet, I'm just going to do it anyway and then go to the board and we start getting, everybody starts doing it? I mean, that's my concern about this, right?
And mine.
And I'm just, and it's not just, and I know this, forgetting this case aside, right? What if we get 10 more next year with the same thing? Okay, they circumvented the town codes, the board paying, whatever. Now they're coming before the board for forgiveness and I'm just going to get it anyway because they've been approving all of these. That's my concern. Now, this is, you know, I haven't made a decision on this case, yeah, but I'm just concerned over that issue. If we kind of say that we're going to okay this after-construction review.
But I have a hard time with it. When I set a precedent and, and I'm glad that Mr. Rego and Mr. David brought up the other one that we denied because it is not our persona, that's not the way we handle things. But sometimes these things come about and sometimes they're legitimate and sometimes they're not.
I agree.
And so.
Yeah, and then just to make comment on that other case, the one thing, as I recall, the inspection, so there was other work that was done before the deck was built, those inspections were done and the project was more or less considered finalized. And then they built the addition onto the deck. So there's slightly different twists.
And the reason for it was, the reason for it was lame, you know? And it didn't, it wasn't a legally recognizable reason.
So anybody else from our board? Oh, Mr. Skedary?
Just what Mr. Ladati said, that if we forced them, decided we, the board, no, we forced them to take it down and then they come back and apply to us again.
We approve.
We're probably going to approve it.
And they got to rebuild it, yeah.
And they're going to rebuild it.
Yeah.
Mr. Hovlerio?
Hovlerio? It's not an easy situation to be in.
Yeah, so I live off that block. I actually walk by that house all the time. I seen that house during the entire construction. My comment is, it's coming out beautiful. I don't think it is high source to the community or the rest of the houses around it. As far as the testimonies, I believe everybody is on the same point. I think it was an honest mistake. But I do see, I've seen it from the beginning all the way until now, and I think it's coming out relatively well.
Anyone else? Okay.
I think, I think your concern, you really have to do, you know, one, a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
If you tell the zoning officer, like in this case, tell them to knock the roof down so, so they come to the board clean.
Well, I'm not saying that.
Before Zach, if we approve it, they got to rebuild it.
Now, I understand it's a case-by-case basis, but I don't want 100 cases coming to this board. I agree. Within the same situation. That's, that was my only concern. So, okay, so.
I'll motion open the public.
I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to open the public if that's the position we're in.
We did that.
Oh, we did that, okay.
Now we need to make a motion whether we're going to approve or deny this application. So, does someone want to make a motion to approve or deny this application? Every time I see the cameraman put his hands up, I think he wants it. Do you want to make a motion? Mr. Venestrel, what would you like to do?
I'd like to file a motion to approve this application.
Very good. Any one second motion?
Second.
Okay. The motion is made by Mr. Venestrel to approve this application, seconded by Mr. Alvek Alvario. I'm sorry, sir. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pisserna?
Yes.
Mr. Venestrel?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Soladadi?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
Mr. Hovlerio?
Yes.
And Mr. McMahon?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make a comment as an extension to this application. This is not the normal procedure, this is not the way we normally do things. And of course, someone's going to come up and say, well, how come he did it this way for this one and not for that one? It's an isolated case, I want to put it on the record, that had the planner and the architect not presented that case the way that he did, this could have gone a extremely different way. So, thank you. And the attorney. Thank you. And good luck. Good job with your mark.
Thank you, bro.
Bro, I like bro.
Thank you very much.
Do you need more time?
Sorry, do I say something?
Uh, not now. On that case? On that case?
Yes, sir.
Case is over, sir. I opened it to the.
I just wanted to thank you guys. I am.
Well, you can say that all night. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
That's good. In that case?
That case?
Are those photos around?
They are.
Somebody decided. Good, good, good.
Sometimes I hate this job. Okay, next application is 50 Boe Wright, lot six, lot six, application number 3, 4221. You state your name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Vasquez, Representative Avenue. Just to refresh you, we're here in September. At that time, you have just testimony of the architect, the engineer, as well as the planner and the applicant. The board had closed the matter, but prior to voting, there were several issues that were raised with regard to our final site plan and they addressed the letter from Mr. Quaid as well as the letter from the planner. There was also a journey to give, but I actually, based upon what Mr. David's comment, this concern about the elevations. And it was adjourned to give us an opportunity to revise that. And what I'd like to do here today, only because it'll save us a lot of time until our testimony has been in, if I can address what the comments that were made, there will be a second, in Mr. Quaid's letter. At any rate, Mr. Quaid's report dated November 10th addresses the revised site plan. And there were only, I believe there were two or three issues that he raised, specifically with Quaid. So again, I said and I'm not going to, but I believe it's number six of your report, number eight of your report, and then you had comments with regard to the storm work management. All the other comments you essentially made, the site plan had been addressed and you were satisfied.
Yes.
So what I'd like to do, bring back Mr. Anderson, our engineer, who can then focus on those issues. Now, Mr. O'Brien, in his report, numbers 3, 4, 5, and 8 were issues which I believe the engineer can address, so I can satisfy the board with the answer there. And then, at the end, you'll show the new facade. Mr. David wants to see that, but you're going to have to wait. All right. I don't know if you want to square in, Mr. Anderson, in his picture.
No. No, he can come up.
All right.
And Mr. Anderson, you are still under oath from the September 9th meeting. You qualified as an engineer planner. The only question I have is that your license is still?
It still are.
Still are, okay.
All right. Mr. Anderson, again focusing on Mr. Quaid's letter, can you address item number six? Perhaps you can read it at the time, I might listen when I can't read it.
What item did you say?
Item six.
Item six.
Yes, the applicant shell, and the note that indicated curving sidewalk, concrete sidewalk in District 11 shall be replaced with satisfaction of the engineer. I actually have number eight. Actually, that is that.
Okay.
And then number eight was applicant shell clarifying the smaller closure of the opposite corner of the building. That's the second. And perhaps you can now address three. And three, and so forth. The storm work, Mr. Combs, I have a question with that. Will the storm work system interfere with the roots of, by some trees and the shrubs we're planting? The shrubs we're planting will just grow around it and it's going to be at the extreme periphery of the system of the trees that are on the street. We have the canopies, the root zone usually goes to the canopy and we're in that vicinity, so very small root zone damage to the structure of the trees. And I think that's it, right?
I think it was us.
That's it, I think.
I think I just submitted O and N manual for the.
Oh, correct, yeah, yeah.
And then I think there's another about the, I think it was also Mr. O'Brien's letter, the other driveway at the northwest corner.
All right, we're going to get to that next. Address, I wanted to address your comments first and then we'll do Mr. O'Brien's. Now, Mr. O'Brien's letter, also dated November 10th, but if you can focus on number three. I'm going to read it. Well, the western driveway in the rear of the building does have a one-way and do not enter, which is a portal brought up in the engineer's report that you found it and it's on the site plan, on SBD2.[1742.54]
And, um, and so I think I get Mr. O'Brien's, Mr. question.
No, I think, um, it's just, uh, it's not identified as depressed. I think it just shows, shows that it's like, well, like.
So it's dual enter and one-way?
No, I mean, the actual curving in front of that is not shown as depressed on the.
Oh, I missed the section.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll find that. Number four? Uh, yeah, we can use the hairpin striping.
So, so basically, you, you're not reading that statement of number four. It's talking about the hand pin striping, so you're agreeing to do that?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Hairpin striping is not.
Because, as you know, our deputy clerk and our secretary here needs to write these things down, so I wanna be sure that we have that.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Number, we're done, number five.
Yes, we will, uh, there's a, a, an error in the, uh, in the planning list. I had one called out, uh, JSB, when it should be JSW. I don't know. It was probably correct.
Well, actually, that's where the architect over there. If I may, I'd like to now pull up the architect.
One more, one more thing. Um, could you submit a cost, a cost estimate with the?
Absolutely.
Chris has previously been sworn in our last hearing.
Yes, he was.
For no license for the works, like still went back.
We're gonna refer to you as Chris. Cause I can't pronounce your last name.
Chris is the architect?
Yes.
And he's still under oath?
Yes, he is. Maybe, Chris?
What we have today is, this is the, um, elevation that we had presented at the last hearing.
This is the new.
Oh, that's.
Do we, we have those, right? I think you sent those. Yes, yes.
But what we also have, which you don't have, is the roof. So that's what's in the, um, so perhaps we can just pass this over to the board.
Well, that's marked, that is A three, the three. And this is a revised site rendering. Oh, revised elevation.
It's a rendering.
Rendering, yes.
What is the, uh, the cost estimate increase, just to solve for this?
So, as we all know, that the prices of building materials has skyrocketed in the recent pandemic. So, it's a little bit difficult to, to, to come up with good numbers. But my estimate is that the part of the elevation that is going to be enhanced, which is short stuff and the stuff though, will probably cost between fifteen and twenty dollars a square foot. The area that we are enhancing is, is four thousand square feet. So that will be in the range of approximately sixteen to eighty thousand dollars.
I have no further questions unless the board has any questions.
I'm fine with this.
Yeah.
Much improved.
Uh, I believe at the last hearing, I had summed up, I, I think I did. And, uh, so rather than, unless the board wants to redo it again, you have those two variants, oh, I'm sorry, one variant and two variant. Parten variants and the building, uh, uh, coverage variants. And, uh, obviously, the former and the final site plan. What I would request that the board, the variances, I think the applicant has done everything possible to enhance, uh, the building, uh, the application by, um, again, although we're, we're building it out, that is gonna have the benefit of having more stuff inside the building as opposed to outside. It makes noise. It eliminates the cyclicness. And, uh, also, there's gonna be the removal of all of those garages, which will also enhance the site.
Thank you, Mr. DeMasi. Um, does any board members have any other questions? I think I need to open this to the public at this point. Someone want to?
Motion to open a hearing to the public.
Made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in, uh, the audience would like to speak on this application only?
Can I just ask you where it is?
Fifty Boaray.
I'm sorry?
Fifty Boaray.
Fifty Boaray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the public floor for the hearing.
Motion made by Mr. Day, seconded by Ms. Laddati. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, it seems as though the applicant has met the criteria of the board that, uh, they asked, uh, for certain things, and you brought them back in a timely fashion. So, um, we have to have a motion here on how we're gonna proceed. So, did someone like to make a motion?
Motion?
What is your motion, sir?
Proceed with the approval of, he said, final approval.
Okay. Well, no, this is preliminary and final. We didn't vote on it last time, so it's carried, so it'll be the whole. So this was a carry, so. Mr. Fenestrella, his motion is that he is, he would like to, um, make a motion that he is voting on the preliminary and the final, uh, application at this point. Correct?
Correct.
Anyone second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laddati. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pizerna?
Yes.
Mr. Fenestrella?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Solladadi?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Mr. Herbalario?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeMasi. Good to see you. Very much, very much, very nice. It's nice to have these projects coming like this. Okay, our next applicant, um, is application three eighty-eight, six twenty-one, Magny Goldings, sixty, six fifty-one North Michigan Avenue. And I would like to, uh, just address Mr. Falcon real quick. Mr. Falcon, I had to go in that order tonight by way of how they came in. So, I, I did talk to the board and they just kinda set me straight. Just wanted to give you that respect. I just wanna hang out in that one. Okay, and, uh. Mr. Fraser. He never left the buildings. Okay, Mr. Fraser, what do we have? You remember that, right?
Okay, we're back here for, uh, for the final site plan approval. We reviewed the, uh, the Board of Labor Consultants and also Shamrock. I wanna address some of the points in there. And we also would like for the board's consideration to make a modification to the, uh, exterior of the building. I don't want to present testimony for this, but let me just give you the background. The way the plan was submitted shows a red stripe across the top. What we would like to do, once we leave that red stripe, have an indentation at the top of the building and move the sign that was in front of the office area to the top warehouse area. We can explain why as we go. But I just wanted to address that so you, you get a view as to what we were presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Falcon. What's your game plan tonight, Mr. Falcon, in terms of witnesses?
Philippe, Robelli, who testified last time. Um, Mr. Alzafama is here and the architect is here.
Okay, very good. Philippe, I'm just sorry, Philippe was the, the planner, did you say? No, he's just.
Mike Alzafama.
Mike Alzafama was the planner, but what is?
He represents.
He's the CEO. Oh, okay, okay. You're, you're the CEO of, uh, Magny Merica LLC. You were, uh, you're still under oath from the October fourteenth meeting, so.
Yes.
Assuming you're still in the position of CEO, you're, you're good to go.
Yes.
I hope. Surprise.
That official go through.
At least for, for the moment.
Firstly, I wanna address the, uh, in the Shamrock report, item number two on page two, which talks about the, uh, excuse me. Sorry, item number, item number sixteen, okay, which the comment is confirm that outside of the solar panels, you think they go higher than the roof line? Okay, so you would address that point. Will it be higher than the roof line? No, no. And moving down to seventeen, it says solar panels were not found on the plan. Is it your intention to put solar panels on the roof of this building? Yes, I already, that's the procedure. Yes, so we can add that on as a condition. All right, so could we address now the design of the front? Okay, this is what was submitted in the plan. Remarked this?
Was that, um?
No, this is the, we, we have this in the.
Yeah, we have. I think that just came in.
You have to submit.
Yeah, we're good.
So can you explain to us, please, what change is proposed?
Yes, so I think we remember we had to do some, some changes to accommodate the board. Also, we put a, uh, new window on the back building. Try to create some kind of dynamic. And we added a sign that I can show you better in case of other arrangements. Showing the US airport database out of Kennewood.
Oh, yeah.
The board request. The only things, so pretty much the building that we would like to, uh, building possible to be this one. With the only change of the red band on top of the roof, which I discussed, we have discussed with our president, who has been in the States a couple of days. He doesn't like it. It does not represent our identity. It's typical of, of other culture, which is nothing wrong with, but it's not what we are. So, we would like not to apply the red, uh, the red band on top of the roof and move the sign, the main sign, on this corner of the, uh, back building. To even put it away from, from, from the North Michigan Avenue. That will be the only change that we would like to have, because.
Interestingly enough, Philippe, maybe I'll let Mr. David.
Yeah, we had discussed that before the meeting and we actually, the chairman and I asked, I wonder why they didn't move the sign over the main facade. Actually, I don't know if by code, I don't know if you can make it any bigger, but, yeah, take it off the front and put it on the side. So we had actually talked about that.
Even more now, having the second sign, it's not here, but we, we much rather us to spread out the two sign, one on the street and the second one this one, only sort of their back building. We all, that's, that's the only thing that we would like to change on from this rendering to the latest one we have.
Yeah, well, like Mr. David said, we did discuss that and it'd give a nicer appearance, we thought. Um, that's just him and I, though, but we have the other board members, so we have, we did discuss. So it'll be the upper left of the, uh, front side. Same signs, sign? It'll be Magny, what we're seeing here, but they'll be moved over. Correct.
The US airport measuring and education. So the sign won't be visible anymore because we'd be the other, the other back building, let's say.
Okay.
So are there any questions, Mr. O'Call?
I don't have any. Any, the board members?
Hi, and I'm still licensed.
You still licensed?
I'm sorry, uh, let's see, just check my notes. You're, you're Mr.?
Belz, Stephen Belz.
That's right, D E L T Z.
Yes.
You're the architect and you're still good to go. Okay, thank you.
So the board was concerned about the back building where they're gonna do the inspections of the handler. They were, they were concerned with the monolithic look of the, uh, of the facade walls. So, uh, there, there's three things, you know, we're doing to enhance the building. And one is the one we're, we're just speaking of, which is to, which is to move this sign back to the, uh, the inspection part of the building. And it, it, it gets it further away from the, the sign that's in front. So right now, you know, the two signs are close together. This kinda brings, gives a better balance to the building. And it also gives a little bit of a pop, a splash of color to, to the main building. The, uh, the second thing we're doing is we're adding windows. So we're adding four windows across the front, similar in size to the office building windows. And then we're also adding four windows down either side. So in the plan, it's gonna be a little tough to see, but there's one, two, three, four, and then there's one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. And then the third thing we're doing is we're adding, uh, we're adding vertical ribbing to the, uh, pre-Test panels, kinda similar to what we did in the office building. And this would be a, a, a rhythm of different, uh, spacings. Uh, and this, uh, these vertical ribs would be on the front facade, the two sides, and the rear. So it's, instead of being a front face architectural building, now all four sides are gonna have, you know, plenty of interest. And I, I do kind of agree with the, that Magny owner that, I, I, I just really don't think that red stripe enhances the building.
Good idea to agree with that.
Any questions, Mr. Belz?
No, I'm, I'm sorry for making a joke. I shouldn't be doing that, but I, you know, but it's, it's, uh.
It's good move. Yes, I, I just had a question. So I'm looking at the, the color rendering that you had sent in. So that you can actually see some striping along the front, because obviously you can't see it there. That's what you're talking, that was added, right?
Yeah, I think you see it better here, just the pattern. I mean, it's not just a straight.
I, I, yeah, it's very visible on the, on the front extension.
Yeah.
And a little less so around the side, but that wasn't there.
It will be. I think it's more just the.
No, I'm just saying that that wasn't there at all.
No, no.
So that doesn't.
So it was, yeah, it was just a.
It is a nice touch. It acts more depth.
Yeah, it was a joint every, uh, fourteen feet of, for the.
Yeah, that's a nice, nice addition.
And then the last thing was, uh, you were interested with, uh, the motor exhaust. And what we're doing there is we're putting a intake, two intake vents on either side, and then exhaust, two exhaust vents outside of the back. And there'll be, there'll be an engineer department, mechanical engineer.
Okay, great. Thank you for taking care of that. That was very important to us.
Yeah, I think it was.
Any questions, Mr. Belz?
Did, did that exit mean he was done? Were, were you done?
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll see you in the car. Does anybody have any questions for, um, Steven?
Was there a concern about portable fuel or station room?
There was.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about the, uh, the fueling of the, uh, of the, of the machines at, at that point, were they, were they gonna be portable tanks? Are they on site? I think, I think it was. Mr. Alzafama. I had the fuel tanks and baller locations would be shown on the plans. Which they, yeah. Okay, I, I don't think we have any questions, but we may come back. Michael, uh, Michael Alzafama, you, you were also sworn in on, uh, October fourteenth and you are still under oath as well.
That's correct. I acknowledge that.
And your license is still good?
Yes, stay on.
All right, so can, Mr. Alzafama, can we address the Shamrock Enterprises, uh, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one letter?
Certainly. Um, there were, uh, most of the items were addressed on the revised plan. Um, and Kevin acknowledged that in his memo. Um, he raises, uh, several issues. The first is item number two, the security line. We did provide a second. We did provide a second sheet called security lighting sheet four point one. However, Kevin indicates that the foot candle average numbers are not correct. Well, he, he must have gotten reversed. Because it's point five for the security lighting and it's point nine for the standard lighting. And, um, the, uh, security lighting is in effect basically from about nine or ten PM until dawn. And these are motion activated, so if there is some activity going on in the back, the lights would come to their full, full power and stay on for ten or fifteen minutes to provide for proper security in case someone's prowling around. Uh, so it, I reached out to Kevin, unfortunately he and I couldn't connect. Uh, but it is, it is the appropriate plan. It is the proper reduction in foot candle levels. Item number three, um, we set the trees two feet onto our property. Uh, Kevin thought that maybe that was a little too close, so we had to push it back another foot or two, uh, to satisfy his concerns. Um, on item number six, it's a revised plan show all truck, two show all trucks from accessing from Route twenty-two. Um, we didn't add any inside of the note, but we can, I believe the testimony at the last hearing was that we would make every effort to ensure that the trucks did access, uh, from Route twenty-two. It's a logical route into the site.
Yeah, Mr. Lanzafama, we did make it perfectly clear that we would ask that none of those trucks go through and up Michigan Avenue and through our town.
That's the resolution that we adopted, yeah.
That, that was sort of...
Yeah, I know, you can add a note to that effect, but I'm sure it will be in the resolution.
It is, yeah.
Um, item number ten, uh, ten, item number nine deals with portable diesel tank. Um, if you look at our plan, let me see, over here, there. Over in the back of the building, uh, right by the refuse area, there's a portable tank for ballers. Uh, one of the items that Kevin asked for was electrical power to that area. We didn't indicate any on the plan, but obviously there would be, and we'll add, um, underground electric service to that area. Um, on item number ten, um, we have not heard anything back from the fire department. However, we will continue to follow up with them with regard to that portable diesel tank location. Um, I believe, uh, items twelve through fifteen have been already addressed by the architect, as well as sixteen and seventeen. So basically, all of the bullet points that Kevin had issued after our last hearing, I believe we have addressed. Uh, in addition to Kevin's memo, uh, we also had a memo dated November eleventh, uh, from Harvard Consulting. Um, and I believe that, um, pretty much addressed, uh, all of the issues. Some of the issues are continuing comments, only because, um, we haven't made any changes. For example, such as the plan, all core recalls for the replacement of curving atrons along North Michigan Avenue, the comment is continuing comments that, uh, I must be for Harvard representative, but I believe that means that we're okay. Um, we will be providing, uh, the maintenance manual, operations and maintenance manual, uh, as well as soil testing, um, on or provided by the inspection system as required by best management practices of the state. And again, as to the, uh, disturbance of the state interior property, what we did, uh, we made it clear on the plan that the catch basin, that we're tying into, straddles our property and the state's property, we'll be able to make that connection solely on our own property without disturbing the state property. And our sewer connection is going to utilize the existing connection, uh, that, that runs through the state property, so there won't be any need to further disturb state's area. And I believe that addresses all of the issues that we had in October.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lanzafama. Chris, do you have any questions? Did he answer everything the way you had it set forth? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, he, he did outstanding job revising plans and he addressed all my moments.
Okay, okay. Ed, uh, any, any notes there from Kevin that may have stood out? Is everything in order the way we, you know, the board asked?
I, I, I believe so, yes. I think the most important thing was the dealing with the architectural, uh, appearance of the building and I think that they've described it very well.
Okay. The board members, any questions or anything that you think they may have left out that we requested in the last meeting? Okay, um, I guess we have to go up. Anything else? Okay, I think we're gonna have to open this to the public as well.
Make a motion to open the hearing to the public?
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak about this application? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the hearing to the public?
Uh, motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Venestrella. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we, we heard all the testimony. They presented everything professionally again. Um, everything seems to be in order, what we asked for. We approved, uh, the resolution tonight. I for one, I think it's a spectacular project. I absolutely, gentlemen, love the front sign that says Kennelworth into our gateway. I love what you did with the sign. Um, I'm glad that you're moving your sign over to the right-hand, uh, left-hand side of the building. I like all the things that the board, uh, here talked about and you presented it in a neat, orderly, professional manner. So thank you for that. So we have, you want this? What do you want? Oh.
They're referencing.
You're gonna like this, Mr. Rizzo. The, uh, okay, so what we have here, would someone like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
We're up to final approval. That was one of the conditions earlier this evening. It's supposed to be final approval with whatever modifications that have been discussed.
So the motion would be for final approval on everything that we discussed here tonight, which would also be followed by a resolution.
Yes.
Uh, in our December fourteenth meeting.
Yes.
Make your motion.
Mr. Venestrella would like to make a motion for the final approval for Maggie to move forward. Anyone second? Seconded by two people, Mr. Scadari. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Friserna?
Yes.
Mr. Venestrella?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Mr. Ladadi?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Mr. Valeria?
Yes.
Mr. McNo?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Maggie? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Great luck.
Maggie and, and all your representatives, the professionals, outstanding, outstanding. One of the cleanest applications we've had in a long time and welcome to Kennelworth. And, uh, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
And you're not getting it back at State.
It's used to the borough. That's one of the conditions.
To the borough.
To the borough, not to, not to rich Friserns, to the borough. Okay, um, we're gonna move quickly here now. Any comments for the litter board?
I'll just wish everyone a great day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. David. I wish you all the same. I think, uh, anyone else have anything? I just wanted to thank everybody for moving the date to the fourteenth. I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, I'm gonna open to the public, uh, for you next.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I wanted to thank everyone for moving the, the, the board meeting to the fourteenth and, uh, I really appreciate it. I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday for Thanksgiving. Okay? Um, now will, someone want to make a motion?
Open to the public?
Open to the public by Mr. Ladadi, seconded by Mr. Venestrella. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak about anything they want to at all? Yes, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Roz Dreidoppel?
I'm sorry?
Roz Dreidoppel, Seventy Kemble Drive. Um, I'm here about the two fifty-one Monroe Avenue LLC on behalf of myself and some of my neighbors who couldn't make it tonight. I'm not sure where we stand on, on that whole issue, but I want to make sure that when you folks begin those meetings or discussions and negotiations, that the people that brought that property are, are taken care of as far as exactly what's gonna happen. And what we were wondering, I have some concerns, and let me just start, and I know it's not your responsibility. One of my major concerns is I have been watching what Yamen County has been doing at Lennedy. You know, where they have taken out all the vegetation. Now I notice they're putting in split rail fences down the bicycle path and things. I'm not an engineer, I have no knowledge of engineering, but my common sense tells me, you know, if we keep doing things like this, our flooding issues are going to, to grow. And I noticed when we had the first new restry, there were like three to four inches of warning and I took a walk down there and, and half of Lenning Beach Park was under the water. And that was a major concern for me. So I'm thinking about that and looking up some of the things. One of the things that concerns me are the wetlands that are, that above the property where the two fifty, where Flex and Kittles. So I was told at the, at the council meeting that there would be no way that any ordinancees could change because of those wetlands. And I think I'm here tonight to say, is that true? Could this ever become an issue where the wetlands are, you know, built on because of the new ordinance was passed, which would make me very nervous to continue living there?
I was at the meeting when you asked the question and the mayor answered that and she said there would be no way that that would ever happen.
I, I wanted to hear it because, you know...
I heard it and everybody, Mr. Venestrella was there.
Yeah, and like she said, we are in the meeting, so here I am to make sure that that is the consensus.
The wetlands are probably one of the hardest things to go up against, so, um...
Yeah, stated, stated. True stick to it.
Yes, exactly.
So it's...
We, we don't con, I mean, there are higher boards than us that would regulate those kind of things, but I can tell you, when the mayor told you that that's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen unless something comes down from the hierarchy to us. So she did not make a false statement. I was there that day.
And I wasn't thinking it was a false statement.
No, but sometimes...
Sometimes high security work from the people who have the responsibility of work.
Now, I'm, I'm the chairman, but if anybody here on the board disagrees with that, you can certainly chime in. But I was at that meeting when you asked the question.
And of course, I also don't know, and I didn't ask that, which part of that property we know are the wetlands? I have no clue.
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that unless I looked at the, the map and the zoning map. I don't have that information, but we can certainly find that out.
I would like to know that because, you know, again, I'm concerned about taking out trees and, you know, replanting and things like that because flood, you know, some of the neighbors get very badly flooded outside of that.
Chris, where, where would she go to get that information?
Don't tell me the computer.
Usually, I mean, for a parcel of land that has wetlands on it...
I'm sorry?
Usually for a parcel of land that has wetlands on it, it's usually someone who's trying to develop it or someone who owns it who has to have it surveyed to, to, to locate the, the wetlands on the property. So that survey has been done. Um, it might, there might be already state, state maps that have done it already or, like I said, who owns it. They may have done it. I have never seen it personally, but that is the, that, those would be the only type of mapping that I'd be, I'd be aware of.
And they would present that, correct?
Yeah, so, you know, to, to co-tail what he just said. If an application came before us and they would, uh, present that they were going to try to build something on or around a wetlands area, we would be here for a month of Tuesdays talking about that. So I can tell you that much because that's a very fine line and we, we can't encroach.
And that's, and I guess for me it's important because I'm up on their property.
Yes.
So I would like to know where that portion of is. Okay, so you haven't received any contact requests for that, okay?
Nothing.
And I just, I'm sorry, uh, there is, I hate to say this, there is, I believe, uh, a website that you can look.
So nobody will do that for me, right?
I mean, if you hear your, your, your information, I can, I can...
I would appreciate that. I will before, I mean, thank you for that. Do we know who the company, what the company name is? I know that Linda had said it was a German company.
Um, I'm, I'm not pretty good at information, so I couldn't help you, but you can look back on the records of the meeting minutes or if someone else knows the German company. Um, I think you could file an open request for that or just contact the mayor. She'll, she'll be happy to, to tell you. I'm sure she would.
I know, I know, yeah, this one. And...
Yeah, but my understanding is that unless something has changed, the property was not being purchased by anyone who is looking to occupy the old Flex event site. It's being retained, but again, unless something has changed, it's being retained by the current owners and they are gonna have, you know, provide leases to potential applicants.
See, that's not, I don't think I got that impression from, from me.
Like I said, my information is not, you know, like within the last week or anything, so maybe it's changed since then. So, but again, I was in a meeting where it was pretty much assured from the, the owner of the Flex man, they weren't selling.
Right. So sometimes the underlying issues, uh, from council to, uh, the planning board, we don't know, I, at least I don't know what goes on there until I hear it from the board members. Um, so I, I really don't get that information. And it's some, it's somewhat of a fine line for us too. We have to be careful what we talk about and how we hear it, you know. But I'll tell you that after I leave here, I'm going to, um, Tarnaminos and I'll be sitting at the bar having martini and I'm gonna hear about five jobs that are going on that I approved that I never saw.
Because, you know, I thought it was interesting in what I was able to find out. I mean, it looked like the, there was some kind of LLC who bought the property for, I think it was four hundred ninety-eight million dollars in April. So that's maybe where there's, there's confusion. I don't know. I think I...
Do you remember that, Jim, from the meeting?
I don't remember. I don't remember that.
That sounds like a pretty hard number for the land.
That's, well, you know what, that's exactly...
No matter how large, you know, it's a large party with half a billion dollars. I don't think so.
Or amortized over a period of time, but no.
I'm not gonna waste your time. If I can find it fast, I can never find, I can never find anything fast. I don't see, but I did, but I did see that in April, they said they did, okay, the property was sold. Okay, this property. No, I can't find it, but I know I did see it here. So anyway, I'll let that sit here. But that's what I had heard. That was the last thing that I heard, that they, they got. Do we know yet, um, whether there were tax credits granted for, for the purchase or whatever?
Actually, the purpose of the, was it Roz?
Roz, yes.
Is it okay to call you Roz?
Yes, certainly.
Roz, the purpose of the planning board is, is not that. We don't know that. That's really council, uh, information. They would have more of that. The council have the CFO there, the council president would be there, you know, they would have that information. We're here to exercise the ordinances and things, but if I had that information, I would certainly give it to you.
Okay, alright, then I'll just, and the other question that, that a friend asked me to ask you too, she lives on Woolshire. And something again, and I guess again, it's just to ask you all of you to keep in mind the people who live on that, on that perimeter and some of our concerns. Um, she had asked me to ask if there would be any possibility at the point of whatever they were going to do was being done, whether they would do anything as far as still being in Woolshire. Is that something that the people there don't want, so?
Okay, so for your friend, I, well, I could say is if an application comes before us, we'll look through it with a fine tooth comb. As you witnessed here tonight, we, we, we don't just approve or deny applications. We really try to do the best we can. We try to be a good lenient board, but at the same time, we have to follow the ordinances. So sometimes we could be talked about out there because, you know, why didn't we do it this way? Why did we do it that way? But when you hear all the testimony, that's when we have to make a decision. But I want to congratulate you because I see you now at council meetings. I see you here tonight. And I wish you could get some of your neighbors to come and partake in this because it would make our job a heck of a lot easier because it's left up to us to do. And I think Mr. Venestrella and pretty soon Mr. Zimmerman in the back will attest to that because they have to do everything. If they don't hear from the public, you can't blame us, right? So thank you.
And thank you for that because I do try. I even talk to people after that, okay? And thank you for that, because I do try. I even told people after that argument, you know, everybody's standing on the street corner, just, oh, this is terrible, blood is terrible. I said, you need to go to the meetings in May, I'll, like, the, no, you think. Anyway, thank you very much.
Well, one, one other thing that I, you know, if you probably saw that tonight, as we went through the, the, um, applications that we heard, if and when we have an application before us, anyone who lives within 200 feet of the application has to be noticed. So you'll be made aware that there's going to be a public hearing, and it has to be, you know, we have to open the meeting, the hearing to the public to make comments, so...
And I'm glad it came, because that's interesting to me, because when I asked the question, they said, oh, the only time the public, and my name's on the list, this part of the public, but they said the only time you would need to, the only time the public would be notified is if it was something out of the ordinary that they wanted to do there. But thank you for that.
No, like I said, and you probably...
Everything we do.
...within 100 feet has to be noticed and made aware at the hearing. And so, you know, you see that we have kind of two times that we allow the public to speak. One is to speak on a specific hearing, application, and then at the end, like you're doing, we open it for the general public to just make comments. So again, we're required to do that, and they're required...
Thank you very, very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming down. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second. Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, before we adjourn, um, I would just like to say one other thing. Uh, I recognize, um, Mr. Venestrella and congratulated him on his win for council, but I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Zimmerman in the back on his win for council, and we'll look forward to doing some real, real good work in, uh, next year. So congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr....
David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio, all in favor?
Aye.
Martini time!